All right, I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of the City Council and School Committee of Mr. Jones. Would you kindly call the roll?
I would be happy to, Madam Mayor. Counselor Cameron.
Here.
Counselor Cole, I'm sorry, Committee Member Cole.
Here.
Counselor Connell.
Present.
Counselor Cronin.
Here.
Committee Member Decanter.
Here.
Counselor Devlin.
Present.
Counselor Earls is absent. Counselor Agaman.
Here.
Counselor Junta.
Present.
Member Hochheiser.
Here.
Member Menon.
Here.
Member Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor Tontar.
Present.
Counselor Vogel is absent. Counselor Z.
Present.
Counselor President O'Brien.
Here.
Mayor Holliday.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The purpose of our meeting is because there is a vacancy in the office of an elected school committee pursuant to the City Charter, Section 4-6, the City Council President has convened this joint meeting of the City Council and School Committee, and this meeting shall be presided over by the mayor. The purpose of the meeting is to review applicants for this interim office and allow them an opportunity at this meeting to present their credentials to this joint body for their consideration. It is important to note that the individual selected by the City Council and School Committee will fill the position for the remainder of this term ending December 31, 2019. If he wants to continue to serve on the School Committee beyond this interim period, he will then have to run for election in the fall of 2019 for the new term starting in January 2020. We currently have three candidates for the position of School Committee, and I understand that Mr. Ted Waldron would like a moment to address the committee. Would you come up and please be seated?
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council and the School Committee. Appreciate your time here tonight. First, I'd like to just share with you my reason for putting my name into the hat to begin with. About four years ago, I have a seven-year-old daughter, Sophia, who's in the president hand, and she is under an IEP. So, serving in a public capacity and giving your time back to a community is certainly a heartfelt thing to do. I know everybody in this room, I have a tremendous amount of respect for for the time and efforts you do put into helping out the community. I know it's no small task. And it's sort of an out-of-sight, out-of-mind thing until it affects you personally. So, when I was maybe five years ago, my daughter, two-years-old, was not speaking, we went through the process of going through an IEP. So, for those of you on the School Committee, I know you're all very much aware of that. And the special needs program is an extraordinarily important part of the school system, and it's also a very expensive part of the school system. And it's extremely important to have the best personnel you can possibly have in that role, because if the city doesn't provide those services needed for taking care of kids with special needs, the parents have the right to go outside of the system, and the city has to pay for that. I know that there was a position open currently for a BCBA Director. I know that that is probably one of the more important roles in the school to be filled with someone that's extremely good. From my own experience, it's amazing. Now, to fast forward, my daughter is doing very, very well, and I give all the credits to all of the services that were provided here at the city to enable her to be where she is right now, whereas we think that she's going to have a real shot to be independent in life, to the point where she forced me to wear my Shamu socks to the meeting tonight for good luck. That being said, in my opinion, I have a background in finance. I know a lot of folks here in the room, you know, know who I am. I own a company called The North Shore Advisory Group, and we provide a lot of financial services for businesses and individuals. I've been in the industry for just around 26 years now. So, for me, the role that I was going to bring to the table was a background in finance, accounting, and budgeting. And, you know, it's easy to look on the surface and think that there's issues, and you can point fingers at what those issues are. I do not have a background in teaching and education, which I know some of my newly-found friends behind me do have. My role may have been to come in and think about a better way of spending money. The budget of the school takes, it's half, more than half of the city budget, which you're all very much aware of. And so, my concerns going into this thing were, you know, just up until this year, and I give a lot of credit to the folks sitting at the table, to bring two, four Spanish teachers back into the school system this year at the junior high school level, which is a great start. Thank you for bringing those back in, Madam Mayor, and the rest of the people, the City Council, and the folks at the City Council to finance this stuff, who, of course, are collective money. My wife speaks four languages. I've traveled around many places in the world, and I wish I spoke more than English, which at times I feel like I can barely speak that at times. But languages is critically important to the benefits of kids going forward in this world. Mandarin is a business language. I would love to see more money funneling into areas like education and teachers. I personally feel as though the administration level is a little higher than the teaching level of the schools, and I would love to see more money being allocated towards teachers. I would like to see where money is being spent. But all of these things being said, I think there are two extremely good candidates sitting behind me, and it's come to my very recent attention that I may have a conflict through a state level by being pointed to a different board through the city right now. I don't know if there's a conflict of interest or not, but where there might be, I'm going to recuse myself as a candidate to make this election easier for all of you, because I do like the two folks sitting behind me. Sean and Gary are good folks. I don't think it's a win no matter who you select. I'm sorry to have taken up your time, but since I was already here and a candidate, I just wanted to say my piece and wish the city, the school, everybody here on the board, best of luck, and the luck to the two guys sitting behind me.
Thank you, Mr. Waldron. Thank you. So, at this juncture, the two candidates remaining for our consideration, each will have five minutes to present an overview of why they're interested in this position and what they can bring to the table, and then we will have an opportunity for questions, a few questions from the School Committee members and the City Councilors, and then we will move on to our next candidate and then take our first roll call vote. Everybody understand where we are? All right, so, I'd like to call forward Sean Riordan to please come up and sit in that chair right there and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are interested in this open position seat on the School Committee.
Well, first, thank you for having me tonight. I first want to thank the two guys sitting beside me. I think anytime you have an opening on the School Committee, or, you know, you have a great School Committee member that has to leave the district due to, you know, moving out of Newburyport, you know, you worry about who's going to step forward and fill those shoes, so I think we were really lucky that we got three great candidates to step forward, offering different skill sets and experiences to the table. You know, being a kid who grew up on Congress Street, went to Davenport School, and then moved to Jefferson, went to Belleville, you know, right down the street from President Ham, this is pretty incredible, sitting in front of you tonight, you know, kind of it's a kid from Newburyport's dream. You know, my grandparents graduated from Newburyport High in the '40s, my parents, '69, '70, I graduated in '93, and my youngest son, Oliver, just started kindergarten initially in the class of 2030 for Newburyport Public Schools, which is, I have a great appreciation for the history of Newburyport, particularly Newburyport Public Schools. You know, honestly, I've always, you know, tried to be involved and serve. I always thought I was a natural fit for the School Committee. I think I have a pretty well-rounded resume. Number one, I have three kids currently attending the public schools, and I think that's important. I'm incredibly invested in their education, and really, my whole life, I've worked with kids, so that's an extremely important part of my life. You know, again, I'm unique in that, after I graduated college, I've worked for the Newburyport Public Schools. I worked in the Special Education Department. I started out as an inclusion specialist. I moved on, worked for a couple of different roles in the Newburyport Public Schools. I worked for a year at Triton Regional, also as an inclusion specialist. You know, I came from a family of teachers, so I grew up in these classrooms, so I'm definitely, again, I bleed crimson and gold, and it's very important to me. I've also tried to stay involved. I think I'm the only candidate to work for Newburyport Public Schools. I've coached for Newburyport. I coached for the basketball for a number of years. You know, I volunteered in the community. I was very involved in the store court pride. I was served on the Parks Commission. Currently, I'm serving on the NHS Wall of Fame, so again, you know, again, I continually look for ways to donate my time to our schools and to our kids. You know, my professional experience, the last 12 years, I've worked for a number of educational publishers and educational technology companies. This has allowed me to be in classrooms every day, which I think is really important. I love that aspect of the job. I have really thoughtful and meaningful conversations with school leaders and teachers. I can hear about what's working, what's not working, what are their challenges, what are their issues, and what are their successes. And again, I might not be, I might not, I'm not considering myself an educational expert by any means, or, you know, am I an expert of what we're currently doing here in Newburyport? But I guarantee you, if I get the job, I will become an expert and really look closely at what we're doing. Are we seeing the results we need? Are we seeing student growth? Are we seeing student achievement? And are we really meeting the needs for all the kids in the district? I think that's really important to me. Again, so I've worked with these districts on curriculum issues. I've worked with them on implementing freshman development plans. I've implemented educational technology, seen their successes and struggles with that, and really the power of those programs. Again, that's why I kind of got in, I kind of fell into the sales side of it. Again, I came out of the classroom, but I've really enjoyed being able to work with teachers and students and help them all across New England. I've also worked with superintendents across the country. I worked with a company called District Management Council, where I really was hands-on as they were examining their budgets, working with their scheduling, creative ways to freeing up resources to fund those strategic priorities, which, again, I think would really...
Just finish, please.
Oh, just finish. So, any case, I've worked with budgets, I've worked with, and I've worked with freeing up resources, which I think really translates well to Newburyport, who are always trying to maximize our resources. Again, I'm going to be a listener. I'm going to work hard. I'm always going to be prepared, and I'm going to be a free thinker, so I would never put my name on something that I don't think is in the best interest of the kids in Newburyport. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Questions? Sean?
Hi, Sean.
Hi, Sean.
You stated at the beginning that you've been interested in the School Committee for many years. Why now?
That's a good question, and I've had, oh, and I also want to, I'm going to answer that question, but I also want to thank you all for all the thoughtful answers you've given me these last two weeks, so I don't think I did that at the beginning, but I really appreciate it. I know how busy you all are. Why now is a good question. I actually, I ran for office four years ago. Somebody beat me. It was a good experience, and I've always tried to stay involved. And, you know, again, I've always thought I was made, tailor-made for the School Committee, but that particular year, I just, you know, that seat opened up, and I decided to go for it. But in the back of my head, I always thought I had the resume and the passion for the School Committee, because that's just been my whole life. So, now, it's funny, when I thought about running this fall, and this is before I knew you were stepping down, thank you for your service, Sean. And then I really liked the candidates that were running. I mean, I've known Stephen Cole for a lot of years now. I think he's done a wonderful job in the School Committee, and I don't know David very well, but I know he's done a great job. And then Brian Callahan was the other candidate who pulled papers, who, again, were friends with the same people, and I thought he would do a great job. So, I just didn't think it was the right timing for me to run. So, again, this came up, and I had a conversation with my wife and my family, and I decided to put my name in. I just thought, you know, it ends a pretty significant time. It's half a term, so, I mean, it's two years, and I think these are going to be challenging years for Newburyport, and I just wanted to be involved in those conversations.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Menon?
Sean, there are certainly advantages and some disadvantages to being a School Committee member with kids in the district. Have you thought about what it's going to feel like to have to take votes that may shift resources away from something that's particularly meaningful to your kids in order to serve the needs of the whole district?
Sure. I think those would be difficult. I mean, I've had the opportunity to work with School Committees throughout Massachusetts and New England the last few years, so I know that those could be difficult decisions. And, you know, I think if you're approaching it with what's best for kids, and the most of the kids you can affect in a positive way, you know, I think those are the decisions that need to drive the district, whether it be, you know, adding girls volleyball this year, or adding a couple more options for, you know, world languages in the middle school. I mean, I think you want to positively affect as many kids as you can.
Follow-up, Sean?
Sure. If I could also follow up, I'm going to leave the question sort of very open-ended, so you can answer it in any way you'd like.
Sure.
But can you talk to me about sort of the nexus of technology and education? What do you see as that point at which they meet, and how do you then maximize the benefits to a district and to students?
Sure. I think first and foremost, you have to have the hardware available to the students, which I think Newburyport has come a long way in. I will say, from being in that side of the industry, Massachusetts is really behind a lot of areas in the country when it comes to technology. I think we've made really great strides, but I think they, a lot of districts have been very slow to kind of jump on that train. A few of the companies I've worked for, you know, really were pushing, you know, a blended learning model, you know, and obviously the flipped classroom, we've talked a lot about. But I think there's real power in it. I think, again, from a data standpoint, some of the technology things that we can do now with our students, you're getting instant access to really actionable data that you can affect really at real time in your classroom. So, that's where I see the power of it for teachers. I mean, I think, you know, they're able to assess where their students are at at that moment, you know, pinpoint problem areas, really pinpoint kids who aren't getting the standard that they're trying to address, and then it can really affect the teaching in the classroom, because now you're letting the data drive the instruction, which I think is really powerful.
Mr. Hochheiser?
I'm going to follow up on that one step further. So, if Massachusetts is behind the curve-ish.
I'd say slower.
Slower on the curve.
And that's just because...
But yet, anything anybody reads about success rates, say, we're doing just fine, if not exceeding the curve, can you talk to us about why we would think to move any deeper into that well?
Sure, and I think that's part of it. I think, you know, Massachusetts historically has been known for their great schools, and we've got the highest achievement rates in the country. I love that, you know, we've, you know, kind of stepped away from, you know, the park-smart balance way of thinking and going on our own and doing, you know, MCAS 2.0. I think that's important, but I do think, I just think that's what's next. I mean, I think if we're constantly trying to move forward in our thinking and move forward with some of the, you know, resources available to us, I mean, I think that's where you see the power of technology. So, and maybe that's why it's gone slow, because, you know, we're doing great, but I think we should always be striving to do better, and I think technology can play a part in that, for sure.
Mr. Decanter?
Going to take you down a different route completely and take advantage of the fact that you are a parent, you're a community member, you're an alumnus, you're an educator. And the question that I would ask you is, from your point of view, what is it that the community, or the alumni, or parents should know about Newburyport School System that they don't know right now?
Good question. Well, first and foremost, I mean, I think there's a tremendous amount of pride in our community. I think we really come out and support our schools. And again, I think we have wonderful schools. I feel so fortunate to be raising my three kids here, but I think we always should be striving to kind of set the bar higher and really have great schools, and that should be the continuous goal. I mean, I think we have wonderful teachers. I've been blessed. I think we have a wonderful resources here in Newburyport. I think we have wonderful nav facilities, which was, again, a cloud, I think, that hung over the school system for a lot of years, but, you know, with a lot of hard work, I think, you know, now I can look at these buildings and be proud. And I think we have the environment to really have, you know, foster-stable schools and great environments for kids to learn, and I think that's what, I think that's what I would share mostly.
I'm going to jump in first. I would be curious, Sean, if you could talk a little bit about, having been in so many classrooms, as you said, as you, you know, working on curriculum and professional development, could you give us a couple of examples of things that you have observed or sold to other school districts that you think could be beneficial, things that you might see could enhance our school district?
Sure. Well, I would say every school difference, obviously different with different needs. And again, those needs usually dictated how I was interacting with those schools. So, you know, a few years ago, I worked with the Lynn Public Schools. Again, I had a very good relationship with Lynn Public Schools, because I had worked with them a few years before on math adoption, but I came back a few years later working with a different company, and they were really interested in a K-12 writing initiative. I think the Common Core really put an emphasis on improved writing, and that's one of those areas that I think are forgotten about after reading their math, as far as having really teachers with really strong writing backgrounds. And the Common Core, across the subjects, was really asking for that. So, I thought that process was really interesting, because you had a lot of teachers out of their comfort zone, but I was able to work really hands-on, you know, coming up with a professional development plan for those. So, this wasn't, this turned into, they were looking at materials, but it turned into much more than that. It took much more into a professional development angle, and I thought there was a real power in that, because they really believed in their teachers, and they wanted to give them the tools to succeed in the classroom and really improve the writing across the district. And it was a K-12 initiative, which was great. It was the same language, working in the same room works, and all those teachers working together, so I thought that was really powerful. I've worked with some educational technology too, which, you know, depending on the district, it's always different how it's implemented, but I've definitely seen the power of some of those programs. You know, I talked to David a little bit about coming in. I worked with, you know, a company called Chief 3000, which had a literacy platform that really focused on, and which spoke to me, because I have a struggling reader at home, but it really focused on, you know, getting kids access to the same content, so it was able to differentiate for all those kids, which, you know, really spoke to me, especially with my spin background. I thought that, which is the reason why I went to work for the company, I just thought it was a really powerful program. So, to see, again, it was technology too, so you got to see the data and see the improvement right away, and it made an immediate impact. So, I thought those school districts that I saw success with that, I thought were really great. So, I mean, we use similar things. I know we use Luxia Core 5 in the younger kids in the elementary school, which, you know, they've seen some success with that. So, I think it's going to be an ongoing process. I think any school district, some things are going to work, some things aren't, but I think the important thing is that you're having those conversations each year and looking, are we getting our bang for our buck? Are we seeing growth? Are we seeing any kind of impact? If not, then, you know, we need to find, you know, the things that will, or troubleshoot why we're not seeing that.
Thank you. Other questions for Sean?
I'd like to sort of follow up on that. You said, a couple of times now, you've worked with school committees, you've worked with superintendents. Could you fill that in a little bit with some detail? And I'll tell you where I'm coming from, as a teacher, when outside companies come in with programs, sometimes teachers get left with a loss to hear about the changes. So, did you ever, did you ever get, I mean, in that work, did you get beyond working with just superintendents and school committees and get down to the level of working with teachers with...
I would say, my last 12 years working with schools, 95% of the time, I have worked with teachers at the school level, teachers, principals, working leaders like Angela behind me. Those are the people I'm usually working with, and it starts at small conversations, and it gets bigger.
Sorry, what does "working with" mean?
Okay, so, for instance, if a school was looking for a reading program, or they had a reading initiative, or, again, like what I talked about, a writing district, they usually form a committee. All the curriculum thought leaders are usually put on a committee, or teachers volunteer to serve on the committee, and then they reach out to different publishers or technology companies and ask, you know, what do you have for us? Sometimes there's a pilot involved, so they'll use it for a year, and then, you know, again, it's a great way to track through a year, but in that sense, you're working already hands-on with the teachers. You know, you're troubleshooting, you know, the software, you're either working with them on implementation plans, you're bringing consultants in to work with the teachers, so it's, you know, very kind of boots-on-the-ground level. I've had some experience, the 5%, working with superintendents, so on a much higher level, and that was a national company. But again, I loved it, because, I mean, you're talking with some thought leaders all over the country. That was more, we were developing technology at the time that was really focused to do the consulting, so it was, you know, getting a fine-grained look at their budget and what, you know, what are they getting their bang for their buck, you know, line by line, thinking about staffing and different ways they could utilize resources differently to fund those initiatives, which is why they became superintendents in the first place. So, that was, you know, an education as well, so, but again, I come from a family of teachers, and I got into this because I love, you know, I love working with teachers and I love being in the classroom, so.
Thank you. Sean, other than budget, what do you feel is the biggest challenge our school district faces?
Well, I mean, I think in the back of your mind, you've always got to be conscious of and trying to create safe school environments. I think safety is a huge issue. Again, I have three kids, so that's what I'm thinking about. My kids took the bus home today for the first time to their grandmother's house, and I needed a picture.
You were a mess.
And so, they should be great after this week. But, no, I just think that's something, especially nowadays, I think that's, you know, and safer schools, it's a whole culture as well. I mean, you've got to make sure our kids have a safe place to learn. You know, bullying is obviously a huge issue. I mean, I just think that's an ongoing, that's something that needs to be thought of all the time, apart from budget. And I think that affects, that can affect a lot of things. If you've got a positive school culture, then, you know, then you're seeing increases in attendance, less dropouts, you're seeing anxiety levels go down, you're seeing kids that, you know, want to be there and want to learn and feel like this is a safe place for them, so I would say that.
Thank you. Mr. Devlin?
Sean, I've known you as a youth coach, as a parent, as, you know, I know your wife is involved in the Mother's Club, and so, you know, I'm very impressed with the things you're talking about from the, you know, educational and technology perspective. You obviously have a very good mastery of that. For me, I want to know a little bit, what do you think from the parent perspective, or even the student sitting in the chair behind the desk perspective? What are some of the things that you think are, you know, because that's, I would think you have a good niche in that community, like what do you think some of the issues from the parent or child perspective are that the school needs to work on or that they find successful?
Yeah, and I think, as a school committee, I think you should always be thinking of that perspective. Again, I think we have the facilities now. I always worry about, just because it's my background, is those struggling students, whether they be on IEPs or off IEPs, you know, we have struggling students. Are we reaching all those kids? Are we giving them the best school experience and devoting enough resources to, you know, helping them improve? So, I would say that. I would say finding those trouble areas and kids who maybe aren't achieving or who are struggling, and how do we reach those kids?
Anyone who hasn't asked a question yet who would like to? Mr. Menon?
I actually have two questions. The first is that, Sean, based on your sort of experience as a parent of students and as a teacher, what do you think a good teacher evaluation system should be capturing? What is it that we need to know about teacher performance that we should be looking at?
Sure. I mean, there's obviously assessment data that needs to be, you have to see, you know, growth in your class. I think that's definitely a starting point. I don't think you get everything off that. I think there's much more, I mean, I love, you know, classroom visits, and I love being able to sit there and seeing the teacher with their class. I mean, I think every classroom is unique, and each year, you're going to get a unique mix of kids in there, so I think there has to be some element of, you know, reviewing the teacher as their whole body of work and how they're interacting with their kids. I think the data points are only part of it, but again, they're also trying to meet certain standards, so I think if you have a good system in place, then you're going to be able to get a handle on. And then, again, this data doesn't go away, so you're going to get to see year to year, you know, which teachers are having the most success with their students, and then I think that's more of an opportunity. So, now let's take that data that we've used with, you know, reviewing the teachers, and, you know, now we have leaders that are in each of our schools that might be able to help some of the teachers that may be struggling.
Good, thank you. That's useful. My second question is, one of the challenges that the School Committee faces all the time is the level of transparency we're able to provide about what's happening in the district and our ability to communicate with parents and the community about what's going on. I wonder if you have any thoughts about that?
Sure. I mean, I think transparency is everything. I've thought about this a lot just because I feel like I am a very visible citizen of Newburyport. So, I think I definitely would see myself getting approached pretty regularly about, you know, what's going on in the school committee. I think, you know, I think we're here to serve the kids of Newburyport and I think we all strive to have the best schools that we possibly can. You know, schools are very complex organizations. They work in a very political and public forum. So, I think transparency is paramount. I mean, they need to know why we're doing it, why we think the money is good for it, and how many kids are we affecting by it. So, I mean, I think that has to be part of the conversation with our community.
Sean, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and your comments. And I'd like to ask Gary Tyrone to now come up and join us.
Thank you. Just a side note, Judy Kennedy was the advisor.
Sean, she already mentioned that to me.
Okay, Gary, so you have five minutes at this juncture to tell us about why you submitted your letter of interest to take on the school committee seat and give us some background about your, in your professional career in terms of education and, you know, what you bring to the table here.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank everyone for the opportunity to present myself and also the other candidates. Whoever you choose, I think, is going to be a positive addition to the community, to the school board, the school community, I should say. What drew me in, I'm a newbie, so I don't have the history of being a Newburyport resident or growing up in Newburyport. I grew up in Waynesville, Massachusetts. Spent the bulk of my professional career in New Hampshire, where I still am working. I'm going to kind of work a little backwards here. My interest for running for this particular seat was essentially the strategic plan which was introduced to me through a visit with Susan, a colleague of the superintendent, where we were discussing some of the issues, like later school start times and things of that sort. And essentially, I see the strategic plan as being a transformative opportunity for the schools to move forward. Sean just mentioned that his kindergarten is going to graduate in 2030. And I think we need to keep that in mind as we try to collectively work with the strategic plan that has items in it like reimagining teaching and learning, letting schools, letting students work at their pace that's most conducive to their learning, integrating more with the community. And all of those factors require getting outside the box. One of the, and I think I can supply that diversity where, the diversity of thought that will help the committee, you know, more or less make some of those decisions. When you're talking about technology, I know that was kind of brought up, and I don't want to be laboring on technology or I don't want to be sort of cornered as being the person that is technology-centric because I'm not. But when we're doing what's best for kids and we have an opportunity in front of us to take a strategic plan and do some thinking around what's best for the school and moving forward, the school district and moving forward, I think we have to ask ourselves how we're going to work with time, that element of time. Right now, I know there's some push to start school an hour later, which all the research certainly supports that sort of emphasis. I think that's more or less a solution that is within the SEAL system of reasoning. It kind of mimics the experience that we've all had in education, that experience where we start school at a specific time, we end school at a specific time, we go for so many days over the course of the school year, and it ends at the same time, it begins at the same time for everybody. Technology should be able to eliminate that time. And essentially, I've been working with school districts to create blended communities using technologies to create flexibilities for students and, and create more opportunities around time. I kind of, when I started working backwards, it was probably a bad choice. But in terms of the school district and the strategic plan, I do, I'm going to start over, and this isn't good, I realize. My experience in terms of working for this online school has allowed me to be in a lot of different school districts throughout New England. I've worked with teachers and principals and so forth, and I've been doing a lot of work in terms of redesigning schools and that sort of thing. My primary work, however, is underneath the technology, it's in the area of literacy, it's in the area of professional development, it's in the area of adult development. And that has actually informed me with some of the things that schools are facing around technology with regards to how they're going to work with teachers, what the readiness status for teachers to be able to adapt in professional development programs that you would design. I, I, I'm not doing well. Can I apologize?
Five minutes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I apologize. I, that was a rambling presentation that was not effective. So, I mean, I will take questions. I know you have my paperwork and other things.
Mr. Sweeney? Thank you for your interest, Mr. Tyrone. I'm going to read your objective from the information that you sent us. A leadership position in an elementary, in an educational setting oriented toward progressive growth for staff, children, and parents. How does this position reach that objective for you?
Well, I think we talked about transparency earlier. I do think that the school committee and the policy with which it sits has a lot of responsibility for providing the leadership that model the learning and work for parents, children, and staff. I, and the notion of bottling is important for staff to, and parents to be able to see a school committee president.
Thank you. Mr. Menden?
Sure. In your response, you talked about the late start conversation they were having and you spoke to a more creative use of the element of time. I wonder if you could sort of speak to that a little bit more?
Sure. Well, I mentioned the SEAL system of reasoning and I have made the comment to several folks that I think the current effort just to start the school day later is a 20th century solution to a 21st century problem. I have worked with districts that have used technology to really expand the school day. So, the starting time was defined and the ending time was defined, but it was extended and students could start late if that was what was beneficial to their well-being. A particular school district that I work with had some attendance and tardiness issues, which is one of the research reasons why they suggest later start times beyond health benefits. They had a high dropout rate and what they did was they allowed students to come in at 10 o'clock, but they opened up the school until 5:00 as well. There's a lot of collective bargaining aspects to making that change because you need to redefine the teacher's school days as part of that whole process as well. Not every teacher, but teachers within that structure of the particular contract. There's also the time where you have students get to April and they're not doing particularly well, they don't have any chance of passing, they might be slated to go to summer school. With technology, they can restart the school year or they can start to work on some of the competencies in an online environment coming out of the classroom to be able to be more successful as a student.
Other question? Oh, Mr. Hawkeiser.
Sorry, I'm sure. I'm looking at a recently released accountability report for the Massachusetts Virtual Academy at Greenfield. And Desi has done a lot of promoting these virtual academies as well as other options. And even though they keep promoting this, I'm looking at this, for example, and as far as an accountability report, they're classified into a Level 3 school, which means they're on the verge of receivership, which, I don't know how you go into receivership if you're a virtual school, but that's a whole other issue. Yet, they're not, they're not putting the brakes on it because it's got 21st century appeal and sort of that kind of pizzazz factor, that individualism to a fault that I see in certain programs. So, I guess my question to you is, how do you, how do you tell the difference between what's good for kids and that line between what's good for kids, what's different, and what's actually progress?
I'm glad you asked that question. And number one, online education is not for every kid. The model that we've adopted and that particular school that you're referring to has really not addressed that time element that I spoke of. Kids who go to that, students that go to that particular school start when the school year starts in September, it ends in June, they have the same vacation, and the kids need to keep the same pace in terms of that school year. So, you haven't fixed the time element and created the flexibility to help the kid. It just is an online opportunity, it's just something that provides a choice, I guess, for lack of a better word. The online school that we started is, eliminates time, it's any pace, any place. And what that, and also, most of the enrollments are a blended environment. That means that, you know, the kids are not going full-time to the virtual school that we designed. They may be taking a course or two with us and they're still going full-time in their regular school district. So, the full-time students we have are expected to still take the same test and the same SATs, the same college boards.
I'm going to stop here for a second because my question really wasn't necessarily about your school so much as the idea of how do you tell what's good for kids versus what looks more 21st century?
Yeah, well, and I guess maybe I didn't answer the question effectively because I think what's good for kids is allowing them to go at the pace that they want to go at to personalize how they might learn and to provide some options. And I'm just saying that particular school you cited doesn't allow for that. How you determine what's good for kids is through that process of understanding how they best learn, creating flexibility to have them pursue their passions. We have students who need the flexibility or they might want to play a particular sport in the fall. So, the online option allows them to take their face-to-face brick-and-mortar courses, maybe one less in the fall during a soccer season, for instance. And then they can enroll in an online course in January and more or less catch up. So, the other side of that, because we can start and stop at any point, you can enroll for a course at any point in a year, which that school that you cited doesn't. If a school, if a student gets off to a bad start, you should have some options to be able to let that student get a restart and maybe do that work online. I didn't get it in my initial presentation, but the nexus of this, the financial implications of the technology and its application is really working with your staff to be able to have them develop the online capabilities within the school year. Otherwise, you're going to continue to pay for programs and curriculum and that sort of thing. There should be this online option I'm speaking of built right into the school. And I have worked with schools to be able to do that, although I haven't articulated it well with these folks.
Counselor Connolly?
Yeah. Gary, thank you for your response. We've asked a lot of questions about structuring learning environments, but my question centers on a demographic shift that is experienced by schools throughout the country, and Newburyport is no exception. And the shift I'm talking about is the fact that somewhere between 15% and 20% of the households in Newburyport, and I'm not sure exactly where we are, have a kid enrolled in the schools or a parent working in the schools. And yet, since this is a hugely expensive enterprise, how do you see the role of the school committee as reaching out to that 75, 80, 85% of the population and explaining to them what we're doing and why it's worth them investing so much of their tax dollars in this particular activity?
Well, I think if you build in the technology capability and the curriculum capability within the system, and we talk about 2030, or you could talk about five years from now, when you're talking about going into a trade, training industry, what you learn in year one, let's say of a four-year college involvement, is kind of passe by the time you get to grades, not grades, but year three and four. We have a fairly high unemployment, well, we don't have a high unemployment, but a lot of those who are unemployed are unable to get jobs because they need to be retrained for those jobs. We have the capability, and again, we've worked with the development here as well, to have adults have access to this as well. If you're building an infrastructure for technology, you should be able to provide adults to have access to that coursework. So, an adult maybe has lost his job, needs to get retrained, maybe wants to go back to college, maybe wants to go to college for the first time, but hasn't had an algebra course for 20 years. So, now you have an ability and a flexibility to, I think, exceed that 15% you speak of and reach out to a larger, a larger population. Selfishly speaking, I think one needs to make the point that 15% that we're educating is going to be responsible for the other 85% that is concerned about how much we're spending. So, I think there's a commitment from a public education standpoint, has supported me well and has probably supported most of us in this room well. And I think that's part of the democratic system in terms of strong public schools. But going back to what I said initially, I do think that what's developed programmatically needs to have a component to it that serves the greater community beyond the kids that are going K-12. There's also, and I know that Newburyport has dual-credit courses, but the whole expansion of dual-credit courses do also include adults where they can perhaps pick up a college credit as well. I would think would have appeal. I think you need to start to show that there's a wider possibility for just the, you know, beyond 15% of that is access to the school right now.
Other questions? Mr. O'Brien?
In your opening statement, you said you're a newbie. What is a newbie? How long have you been in Newburyport?
Three years.
And on your, what Sweeney said about, in three years, why didn't you run for the position? What made you decide now to run and not put in for the full-term one that was open?
Well, actually, I did collect signatures and I had enough signatures to be put on ballot. I withdrew from that when this seat opened up. In part, I didn't really want to run against incumbents. My issue, I had no issues with the school district in terms of even gathering signatures. People seemed pretty pleased with the schools in general. There was an issue in terms of four people running. One of the incumbents ended up aligning with one of the people who was running that wasn't an incumbent, and I felt that basically it was going to turn into a race that I was not interested in pursuing. I guess a secondary piece of that is being in the community for years, even though I didn't... didn't do it here with this group, I felt I could articulate my strengths better at this level than I could running a campaign, having been in the community just for a few years. Thank you.
We have time for, I think, like one more question. Mr. Cole?
Thank you. Gary, how would you work as a school committee member with school administration to ensure effective professional development?
Well, I think I'm showing evidence of that now. One of the things that I have become involved with over the last several months is the initiative to bring environmental education and connect it with a school and community. A product of that initiative is going to be identifying some areas of professional development that would be needed for teachers as we start to implement the possibilities of community involvement, internships, and things that can spin out of that. I think the work, and from a committee person's standpoint, and having been on both sides, it is the superintendent who would bring recommendations. I think I have a background where I can ask good questions. And if it's a sound professional development program, I think that it's a committee person's job to support that effort. At the same time, there's lots of communication that goes on around that. I also would be working pretty hard in terms of sitting at the table and trying to get involved where I could to be part of professional development initiatives that require school committee people's time.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, what the process is, Mr. Jones is going to call your name, and you will give your voice vote on terms of which candidate you are voting for. Everybody, yes?
Are we gonna deliberate at all, or have time for comments, or is that it?
If you would like, we could deliberate.
I just want 60 seconds, if I may. I just wanted to basically thank the candidates for running. I think we were pretty fortunate to have four people, even though tonight it's turned into two. But I just wanted to offer that, I didn't ask any questions, but I just wanted to thank the four candidates for putting their names in. And anytime I think you have a vacancy, you are concerned about who will step up. And in this case, we ended up with four excellent candidates, I think. And so before we vote, I just wanted to have an opportunity to say that, speaking perhaps on behalf of more than just myself, but at least myself. So, thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments that are...
I would just echo on that, just because she's not here. Alex Coyer was one of the candidates, who I understand she withdrew today. I met with three of the four candidates and know the fourth. All three of them really cared about the school system and really cared about, and they all brought something different and something positive. So for me, it was sort of like, oh, we got a bunch of riches here. So it was a really, I don't know, good experience. And everybody should, including Alex and Sean and Gary and Ted, should be complimented for stepping forward and putting yourself on the line like that. It's very, it was empowering to me.
Thank you. Any other final comments? Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Just to go over the rules for a second, we are operating under Section 4-6 of the Charter that simply says a person will be elected by a majority of those present. As there's 16 present, my math says nine is a majority. Everyone agree? So I'm gonna call the names alphabetically. Please give them your names. Cameron?
Sean Riordan.
Cole?
Gary Tyrone.
Connell?
Sean Riordan.
Cronin?
Sean Riordan.
Decanter?
Riordan.
Devlin?
Riordan.
Argument?
Sean Riordan.
Junta?
Riordan.
Hawkeizer?
Riordan.
Menon?
Tyrone.
Sweeney?
Tyrone.
Tontar?
Riordan.
Bogel?
Sean Riordan.
I'm sorry. Yes. Counsel Tontar, you said?
Riordan.
Thank you. Zee?
Sean Riordan.
O'Brien?
Sean Riordan.
Holliday?
Riordan.
I don't need to count. Congratulations, Sean Riordan.
Thank you very much, everyone. I'm honored.
You need to go see the card tomorrow. But in past votes, we have allowed the opportunity for this to be unanimous vote. Is there a desire on the part of the joint committee? Please let the record reflect that it was a unanimous vote for Sean Riordan. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation tonight, Gary, and also your presentation, Ted. Look forward to serving with you. Now, before we all depart, what...
Those in favor of that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped a step. Okay, so, so moved. All those in favor of unanimous vote of Sean Riordan, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. A unanimous vote. I would also, before we adjourn this meeting, I would like to let Superintendent Susan Paccaro say a few words, please.
I just would like to let everyone present know that is my intention to retire at the end of the 2017 school year. It is my 39th year in education, my 14th as a superintendent, and my 5th there in Newburyport. So I just want to let people know that, spend the best five years.
Thank you very much.
I need a motion to close this meeting. Second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much to the council and to the school committee members for our joint meeting. We will take a five-minute break and reconvene for our school committee business. I'd like to call the order, the meeting of the business meeting of the school committee for September 18th, 2017. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Mrs. Decanter?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here.
Mr. Menon?
Here.
Ms. Sweeney?
Here.
Mr. Hawkeizer?
Here.
We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. The Pledge of Allegiance, in the name of the United States of America, and to the Republic of Georgia, stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mayor Holliday. This brings us to our point of public comment. If there is anyone in the audience that cares to address the committee, could you please step forward, state your name and your address, and try to keep your comments to two minutes or under? Is there any public comment? What, you have nothing else?
Spoken enough.
Oh, okay.
May I just say something?
Absolutely, Mrs. Kennedy.
I worked with Sean when I was the advisor for his class for four years, and he was a wonderful addition to the class, and I agree. He was a very strong voice for the class, you know, not just for certain things, but he was always for the class and a pleasure to work with, and I'm really glad that you elected him.
Thank you. Do we have any warrants, Mr. Menon?
We just happen to have warrants.
Of course we do.
I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $528,340.82 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $26,836.98 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And finally, I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $13,625.6 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I'd like to turn the committee's attention now to the Newburyport School Committee Business Meeting Minutes for Tuesday, September 5, 2017. Could I hear a motion? So moved. Could I hear a second, please?
Second.
Discussion, corrections, comments? All those in favor of accepting the minutes as written?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Our school committee rep isn't here this evening. I understand he had some surgery?
That's my understanding, yes.
Was that what all the ice packs were the last time?
I believe it was on his shoulder.
Oh. Well, a welcome of speedy recovery. Next up on our agenda is a report on the student activity accounts. The superintendent just provided you all with copies. Superintendent, did you give Mr. Riordan a copy?
Actually, I did not, but I would be happy to. We wanted to just, Nancy Leisak and I wanted to just report and just share with you some of my thinking about the student activity accounts. And so, we've put together this information for you. I think there's oftentimes a lot of interest, and these are accounts that are at the middle school, in the high school. I know that, Nancy, we have included the law, so that you could take a look at the law here. But just wanted you to see that, you know, we have a lot of money that goes through each of these accounts, because we have a lot of activities that are happening. One of the things that I did today was that I asked Sandy and Joan to just give me an update for any of the current accounts. We gave you balances in all of the accounts, and where some of the accounts you can see have negative balances. One of them happened to be the bands for grades six, seven, and eight, and that was because there were two deposits that had not been recorded yet. So they updated me on that today. There was a deposit made on July 6th into the band account, and on September, one that will be made today, and there'll be $2,084 that will be the balance in those accounts. But I just wanted you to get some idea of all of the different accounts that we have for both the middle school and the high school, and we've broken them up. And you can see that, you know, there's two pages of accounts at the high school, and, you know, one page at the middle school. But it's for everything from, you know, athletics, to our individual classes, to individual clubs that we have. And you can see that there's a variety. And these are all things, all of these different kinds of activities are activities that students are able to use, to put on their college applications, and to broaden their horizons, if you will. So there's a variety of different activities there, as you can see. I think you're familiar with most of the ones here. And we just wanted to show you that, I also wanted to make you aware that we are audited every three years. In 2015 was our last audit. We will be due again in 2018. I just thought this was important information for you to have, so.
Question?
Yeah.
Could you just sort of refresh us on the process for adding an account, for establishing a new account?
What we've, if a student comes forward, and typically it comes from students where they have, for example, a new activity that they would like to get started, what they do is they come forward, they speak to high school administrators or middle school administrators first. The directive is to find someone on the faculty who is willing to support that organization. Typically, we ask them to, you know, try the activity, see how many students want to get involved in it for a year or two, and then we bring it forward to school committee at that point, so.
The reason that I'm asking is that I don't see, and I did speak with my parent about this, the frisbee club is not currently an account, and I know that they are trying to raise funds, so we should probably establish that account as soon as possible.
That was the one that Jake referred to, correct?
It was the one that Jake referred to, yeah.
Do we usually do, I'm sorry, do we usually do that in the first year, or do we wait till it becomes a club?
Well, the question, I'd rather reframe the question, is what do you do with donations that are pending?
Okay, that's...
So that's the question?
That's the question.
Okay. That's a good question. I don't have an answer for you yet, but I will.
Yeah, the answer that I got was, we'll be starting an account shortly. I'd like to...
What was that?
The ultimate frisbee club.
Okay, thank you.
Because I noticed, is this on volleyball, is that the new?
Yes.
And that's why there's a, not that's why there's a zero balance, but, so I thought it was the first year it was a club activity, and then when it moved into a bona fide sport, I don't know. But anyway, seems to be...
Volleyball grew way faster than we thought it was going to.
I know it, see?
So, we have many, many...
My daughter came home asking to play today, seventh grade, she's growing.
Must be the thing.
It's a great sport.
It is a great sport. It is a great sport.
Now, one other question, if I may, not to belabor, but Mr. Cole, maybe you could help me here on the finance committee. I remember in the past having discussions about leftover funds for classes, and I noticed that now they've been all expended, but it was my understanding that there was a deadline date to use these funds by?
Well, what usually happens is, for typical class, if there's leftover funds, they are written out in check form to the president of the class, who then is responsible for, because the president of the class is responsible for organizing the first reunion, and generally those funds go into organizing that reunion. So those are all zeros, probably because of checks. If anything was left, they were written out to the president of the class.
Okay. And do they have a deadline as to when they have to use the money by?
Probably when they have a reunion.
Okay.
Probably when they have their first five-year reunion, yeah.
Yeah, you can clearly see the difference between the freshman class and the senior class in terms of the amount of money that they have.
But in the past, we have had lingering balances in these prior classes.
And we would much rather have them spend the money.
Yes.
For the students that are here.
Yes.
Mayor?
I'm going over the law regarding these student accounts, and I just have a couple questions. I want to be sure that we are doing what we're supposed to do in terms of here. So we're supposed to authorize these accounts when they're set up and set a balance, correct?
Maximum balance.
Maximum balance. And I don't remember ever doing that.
For each individual one?
Yeah. Or is it a maximum balance for the total student activity?
That's what I'm asking.
It appears to be per account.
I don't think it's per, I don't think it's per account, because you would have such variability.
Yeah, no, because you'd have the theater with, you'd want $50,000 and frisbee $500, you know? And there's so many of them. So I'm just not, I just want to be sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be in terms of, because it says right here, we're supposed to set the maximum balance here.
I don't think we've covered that in policy, have we? Susan, you can go.
No.
So maybe that's supposed to...
And it says here, there shall be an annual audit of the student activity funds. I mean, I know our formal auditors do that, but, you know, I would think that, well, I know that our auditor's department looks at these accounts every year. So I would think that that would suffice. But could we just...
Check on that?
Check on, just make sure that we're following all of the things that we are supposed to do. Because I know with all of our reserve accounts on the city side, the city council has to set for every one of those accounts.
A maximum.
They have to set for maximum balance.
Good questions.
Okay. We may have to tackle that on Wednesday, then come.
Thank you.
And/or is that by level? Is there an account, a high school, and then a middle school?
Right.
Or, I don't know.
I'm not sure either, but I think we need to follow up on that to be sure that we're doing everything we're supposed to do. Granted, these accounts have been wonderful, they've been serving a terrific purpose, and, you know, giving funding for students to be able to do the kinds of things they need to do in each of these, you know, academic clubs, or social, or sports events. So, thank you. It's great to have this problem. or social or sports events. So, thank you. It's great to have this problem.
It is. Any other comment about the student activity? Thank you. Again, to the superintendent, update on high school class events?
Yes, I just wanted to share with you. So, as you know, a couple of years ago, we had some staff who was at the high school who decided they wanted to take on a project of working individually with each of the classes, and to have a day in which they do that. So one of the things that they are doing this year is that freshmen will be staying at the high school and will be doing mindfulness activities. I believe that they may have changed the date. I think it's next week.
It is next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. But they're going to be doing mindfulness activities as an entire freshman class. The sophomores are going to be hiking Mount Major in New Hampshire. And the, and this is just the, kind of an overview, if you will. The juniors are doing a science and art project at the northern end of Plum Island, and then the seniors are providing community service around the city. And I want to give you an idea of some of the activities that they're going to be doing. Some of them would be working with the Parks Department. Some will be going to the Jeanne Geiger Crisis Center. Some will be going to City Hall and working with Molly Attenborough. Some, some will be doing a downtown cleanup. Some will be working at the fire station, helping to wash and whack some of the vehicles there. We have students who will be...
I love it.
And working at Breznerham, and working in a variety of different, from the preschool and to our PE, kindergarten classes, individual classes there. It's really, it's quite broad the kinds of things that they're doing. They will be working with our librarians, and it's just, it's really, it's really, I think, a great idea. We also have students who will be going to not only Breznerham, but Mullen and NOK as well. So I just think it's a really nice way to pull an entire class together. So, as I said, the juniors are going to Plum Island, and they're doing a variety of STEAM activities there. Laurie Salazo is the person who's sort of spearheading all of that activity. But the kids are given really detailed, detailed information, but some questions to ask. They want, we'd like you to use this time to stress through discussion the connections of this day to a student's academic journey, and his or her pursuit of science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. And she's given some guidance to some of the other staff who will be there. You know, what skills and content have you learned that you think will help you as you move forward? How does art affect the world around us? How has your Newburyport academic journey gone? What particulars of your academic journey are memorable? What strategies have you found to be especially helpful? So really thoughtful kinds of activities to get the kids talking with one another. The sophomores, they go on the hike. And it's really all about, I think, for all four classes, it's about, you know, how can, how can we bring mindfulness to the activities that we're doing? How can we help you to de-stress a little bit? And that's certainly the focus of our freshman class, is to really get them to start off, and they're four years at Newburyport High School, and have a really successful experience. So, I think it's a really, kudos to the folks who started it. And it's really, I mean, I think kids really look forward to it every year, so.
And is this one day?
It's one day, yes.
And is there any thought of expanding it? Because it sounds very exciting to me.
I think, I think there's no thought to expand it just because of time on learning.
What better learning, though?
The part that's nice about, oh, excuse me, is that every staff member's in...
No, I know. I just think this is wonderful, and if we could do this, something like this once a month, it'd be great for me. I don't know.
Beginning and end of the year.
All right, we'll move into this.
Okay.
But I ask what the freshmen are doing.
The freshmen are doing mindfulness activities here at the high school.
It does somewhat remind me of the presentation we had about the summer reading books.
That's exactly what it is.
That's, oh, that is what it is. And so I guess my next question, so they did an environmental theme again? Is that what, sorry, I missed that, the whole, like...
I didn't, I don't know the answer to that, David. I don't know if they focused on an environmental theme.
Because I remember last time, like, they were connected to the books. So, so they're...
They are.
Okay, great. So there's like, it sounds like an environmental theme, or...
There's different themes each year.
Oh, each class has a different...
Yeah, freshman year has a certain theme, sophomore year has another, junior and senior. They each have a different theme.
So, well, perhaps, we're not going to have more than one a year. They did talk about maybe other buildings adopting or adapting it to, so was there any success on...
No other buildings have adopted it in the same way.
Well, I mean, because they would be younger, so it's harder to get fifth graders up to New Hampshire, that sort of thing, and to herd them up a mountain back. But, you know, because we had looked at last year, the discrepancy between this and some of the worksheets, for example, that the Mullen was doing for their, or the NOK were doing for their summer reading. And we were saying it would be nice if there was something more experiential, maybe not this big, but...
Yeah, and the NOK didn't do any worksheets last year. Last year was very experiential. They did the whole mystery hunt through the building and as their follow-up to summer reading.
Right, so maybe not the NOK, but I remember, I remember we looked at like a variety of things being done, and some of them were of different, and I do remember the mystery thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And the NOK is doing their follow-up this Wednesday, I think, Wednesday more...
Right, because there was a theme, I think it was like time, time travel.
Time travel is this year. Yes, so that's going to be...
So there was, there is a growth in it, if not. That's good.
It is good. That's exciting. Let's expand a little. Any more, any further questions on that? Thank you, Superintendent. Later start times update. This, as you remember, is an ongoing agenda item requested by all of us to hear what's gone on with later start times. We're anticipating our first report, I think it's October 20th, so...
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth?
Yep.
October 16th.
The only, the only new piece that I have is that I'm waiting on information from Amanda from the YWCA, was putting together information on how far their program could expand if more childcare was needed before or after school. So she's supposed to be putting together that data for me. So I, when I receive that, I will let you know.
And the other piece you were doing were the buses, I think? Were you doing buses, busing?
No.
Class for busing?
Yes, I will have that information for you as well.
Sorry, Mayor?
Yes.
On our last meeting, I believe Breznerham was the only school that I had met.
Breznerham, I believe all schools have met now.
Have met now?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought that was important, because October 16th will be here fairly quickly.
Before we know it, yes.
I think the busing piece we talked about was whether or not we were going to be able to look into the new contract earlier than later, since it's up this year.
There's a lot of factors in terms of the transportation piece, but yes, you're right.
Yeah.
You're right, yes.
Can I brainstorm out loud for a second?
Sure. I may regret my words, but sure.
Yeah, so, as, as part of the Start School Later Cape Ann League Facebook page, I contacted, just reached out to see if anybody knows what Masco was up to these days. Because Susan had told us that Georgetown is backing away from it. The response I got from Hagan was that, and I'll just read it to you, this is, "Masco Superintendent Dr. Lyons is currently working on a plan to have Masco start at 8:30 a.m. He is partnering with Superintendent Morrison to develop a plan for the elementary schools to start at 8 a.m. This is the plan that the four school committees endorsed. There are transportation logistics that need to be worked out, and the full budget impact needs to be understood. Once we have these details, the four school committees will vote likely in January over whether to proceed."
Wonderful.
It is wonderful.
Well, it's nice to know that there's other school committees that can handle this.
And just to add to that, last week Concord Carlisle went a half hour later at the high school only. The difference there being that they own their own buses, and one of the issues was busing, but they were just able to put more buses on, and they only moved their high school, and they're trying it for a half an hour, just as another update to the, so the committee understands that, that there are other school districts moving. Mr. Menon, did you, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I guess my brainstorming, I wasn't, so the brainstorming part of my reading that is thinking out loud about they're going to an 8:30 start. And I know a lot of the elementary people on the committee were unhappy about the idea of a nine o'clock start. And while they weren't enamored originally by the idea of the flipped schedule, to go to an 8:30 start allowed us to have the elementary schools at about 7:40, 7:45, I don't remember exactly off the top of my head. But I wonder if it wouldn't make sense to think about, and again, just brainstorming, so I don't know what this looks like, to think about joining this move, could be because if the biggest holdup for the high school was sports, which I believe it was, and when I say the biggest, I mean, moving, the difference between 15 and 8:30, in addition to whatever other issues there were, to move to something like this hand in hand with Masco might make the whole initiative more palatable, especially for the sports piece of it. And I don't know what the elementary folks would think about that, but I'm just throwing that out there, because I know they're really unhappy with the nine o'clock idea. They were from the get-go.
I think, I think a lot of the feedback that they've had from parents, too, is that that's going to be really difficult for parents.
Right, and I, I mean, as a parent myself, I, I said the same thing. I was very surprised at the committee meetings that they didn't push back more against it, but they didn't, so that's what we went with. But I always, personally, was an advocate for the flip. The biggest problem being that to flip, we would have to bring the high school to 8:30, which would have been very difficult from our athletic department. But if Masco was truly considering 8:30, that would make it a whole lot easier for us to consider that as well.
What are the, Dave, what are the full implications of that flip, if you could just go over that again?
The full implication, I don't know, like, the timing, the timing means that, just off the cuff of my head, that the high school goes to 8:30, and the NOK also goes to, I believe it was 8:30 or 8:25, because there's that differential. And then the Breznerham and Mullen buses start at either 7:40 or seven, start times either 7:40 or 7:45. And so they go a little bit earlier.
Maybe even a little bit earlier than that, just because you need the 45 minutes for the bus runs, I think.
Right, so I think it was like 7:40 to, it was, it was something of that sort. So the, when the buses picked up, I don't, I don't have the sheets in front of me, and literally, I just read that post on my way out the door, so, but I was just started.
I'm certainly happy to talk to Kevin and to just, you know, get his...
So I would be curious just exactly, like, where they are, because, that's all, just...
I'm happy to give him a call.
Just thinking about it, because if people are going to be, if there's going to be as much pushback as I've been sensing since we last talked about this, especially from the elementary people.
But Masco is talking about moving all of their students. They're talking about moving the elementary schools as well.
Right, so it said here, the elementary schools would be eight o'clock.
That's because the high school is 8:30.
Eight thirty, right.
But then, well, this is a conversation, but then, you know, Angela was saying, and we were told, you need 45 minutes between...
Yeah, so it's what I'm saying, so our, our elementary schools would have to go a little bit earlier.
Yeah.
But I mean, we did, we did the timetable. Nobody would be standing in the dark.
Or you could leave them alone.
We could leave them alone. If we had a half a million dollars in our hand, we could leave them alone. So there's, that's still option C. I just, I don't think that's, you know, I'm going to just, you know, do the Johnny Carson here and say that, judging from the committee, I don't think anybody's voting a half million dollar increase to the budget next year.
For transportation?
For transportation.
No.
Not going to happen. So, so I, and I don't know that, personally, I haven't heard any argument about moving the littles forward.
The littles?
That's what we call them in Walden, I'm sorry, they're the littles. To moving the littles forward, that would, that would, that would be detrimental to their education. And I think it would be, it would, you know, some win, some lose probably for families, but I would imagine more, it would be a better split than the nine o'clock start for a lot of families.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think you would find, both parents and staff, I think you'd find in favor of that option versus starting much later.
And that, yeah, so, that was just, just a thought that came to me.
Thank you.
And I know since Kyle is probably starting the, you know, what do you guys think about giving us another 15 minutes on either end of our day to accommodate your sports schedule of conversation with people?
Mm-hmm.
If we're just going to...
Well, I, I think there's power, there's certainly power in numbers, so that if Masco and Newburyport were to go at the same time.
Exactly.
So I think that, yeah, it does help, yeah.
Your athletic director at Masco, John Delanis, used to be the athletic director here.
So he's...
Almost in-house.
He's a friendly.
It would help with the discussion. No, because he knows what some of the issues are, because they have, there's a couple of things they do that is different than here, like have their, if you play a certain sport, then you don't have to do the high school phys ed or requirement.
Wow.
So, they get big turnouts for some of their sports as a result of that, like cross country or football, for instance.
I thought the state didn't allow that.
Well, unless...
I'm not challenging you, I'm...
Shh.
Well, no, because...
I've never heard that.
Harrison didn't care.
We looked into it, but we wanted to.
Yeah, because we wanted to do that.
And it was the wellness component.
If we did it with Masco...
We should have Kyle talk to John about doing that.
Yeah.
It sounds like Masco's got the magic touch.
All right, well, I don't want to out them. Let's move on.
But yeah, no, I...
Maybe they don't do it anymore, but I can tell you they have big numbers in those two sports, and that's what I'm told, that's the reason why, I'm told.
They have big numbers in every sport.
Yeah, but those two especially.
Thanks for the consideration.
No, really, Mr. Menon?
Um...
Is that your mother again?
No. No, it's actually called a substitute teach.
Oh, a worthy cause.
I would be interested in, I would encourage you to have that conversation sooner rather than later, and I would love for an update before the next school. Just send it to us by email, an update, so that we can really take a look at whether there actually is another option that might emerge here.
Oh, it's good to keep it open.
I also think, you know, I mean, I think that, that it's very likely that, given any information that comes forward, may move us in one direction or another. You know, I think that's likely to happen, once we, once we have all the...
That's why we're doing this.
All the facts, yeah.
Exactly why we're doing this.
I will do that this week.
Terrific, thank you very much.
Is there any other option in the city for, for school care other than the Y?
There are private, there are, there are some other options, there's just not, the Y is the biggest.
We're not a...
I mean, we're, we're kind of affiliated, because they have been our...
Right, okay.
So, that's why it makes sense to look into them, and they have the biggest capacity at this point to be able to expand. But it's a, you know, they have a, a breaking point, too, which is why I'm waiting for the information from Amanda.
Right. And have you also had a conversation, or has someone had a conversation with Andy Agmont?
About what specifically? Andy knows.
Well, just, you know, start times and, you know, I think she was for that, looking at, you know, the 40 assets and...
Reducing stress levels.
And I just didn't know if she had a connection or a program or any help she could give.
Well, I think that once we, once we know what the hours will be...
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I think once we know what the hours will be, she'll adjust.
Okay, okay. That's all, that's all I was wondering, do we have options for these youngsters that are going to be going to school and getting out at different times? That's all.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll have to look at it.
And I'm going to bite this one, too. Are we looking at the 990 option for the NOK?
We have, that's one of the things that they're, they're looking at. Again...
Okay.
I just have to keep reminding people that all of, before anything is said and done, that all of it has to go through each of the unions. So that's kind of the final step that has to happen. Once the school committee makes a decision, then we have to, because we're opening up contracts again, at that point, in all, in all of our areas. So, now, again, I would just remind you that when the change was made at the high school, that there was a pretty, I think, simple solution that was found there. And I think that, that you could find the same simple solution if you were to do something at the middle school. But again, we have to look at what that, what that will do to the schedule and how it would use that time.
I just see a big connection between the bus contract and 990, in terms of, you know, would that mitigate some of the expense? Would it? I don't know. I just think there... I, I just think there are kind of dual burners there.
Just refresh my memory. When should we be restarting contract negotiations for the next contract? Can you give me a ballpark, I mean, assume that we would do it at the beginning of the school year that it's up? So it's up in eighteen?
It's up in.
It's our second year, isn't it?
This is the second year.
So it's up in eighteen?
Yes.
So, so we would be, we'll be beginning contract negotiations next year? Yeah, so.
New superintendent, new high school principal, contract negotiations.
Could be new bus contract.
Just a bus contract.
New vice chair.
I mean, I, I, you know, there's, there's such a, there's such a thing as a perfect storm.
Well, we may be.
But, but again, I just want to remind what I said at the last meeting, this may be an opportunity to sit down and really address a number of things, looking at our school day, looking at nine ninety, looking at later start. Because those things are coming up as part of our dialogue, and whether we feel ready for it or not, that opportunity is gonna be there. So if we, if we're gonna be reopening contract negotiations, maybe we just get started, you know, but.
Lot of pieces.
There are a lot of pieces.
Maybe we just focus our entire January retreat, you know, on looking at these things.
Yeah, the transition. We jump everything, then we transition.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, and spend time really focusing on, on all those transition issues at this point. And sort of work with some of the new school committee members coming on as more of a, a separate orientation, and don't get into the communication policies and all that stuff that we normally do, but really delve into this transition.
I think that's a great idea. And keep in mind, as part of that, you may want to shift subcommittees. Just to see if there are other topics that we should be, that we're not currently handling in subcommittee, and figure out what to do with that, so.
Trying to crack that word, subcommittee? Just want to make sure you got it there.
Okay. There's a lot, there are a lot more many hours than what you see right here. Thank you.
Not to push your retirement, Susan, but do you know what the simple solution she's talking about is?
Maybe.
Just don't take it with you.
I have an idea, I don't need her mind.
Just make sure you leak breadcrumbs in case it doesn't happen before you.
Leaking breadcrumbs.
I'll still be a phone call away, so not to worry, not to worry.
She's not gonna escape.
We'll be sitting here in two years, but there's that simple solution Susan said she had.
It's under her blotter, right here. Moving on, please, on an update on the Clipper value work at each school.
I just thought you would like to know some of the things that, what's happening in each of our schools. And, and I just want to give you an update. At Bresnahan, we're addressing the core values with students, teachers, and staff at our community meetings throughout the year. Our focus this year is on branding Bresnahan School. Communications to parents will connect to the Clipper values. The values and mission are also included in, in all parent handbooks. And the welcome letter in the handbook also referenced the values. The Clipper values, expected behavior, safe and supportive, school efforts, and zones of regulations are all interconnected. Additionally, as I said to you earlier, many Bresnahan teachers and staff will be welcoming the Newburyport High School seniors on Tuesday, and there are a number of activities being arranged for the high school's community service project onsite at Bresnahan School. And we're really looking forward to that opportunity once again. Carol Feingold has been reaching out to our public schools for newsworthy articles this year, and one feature article was based on how we are branding Bresnahan School, and there will be another article in the next edition about the amazing whale exhibit that was donated to Bresnahan School by a parent. I just wrote a thank you letter to the people who donated the whale. It's very cool. And it wasn't until, I, I had shown you a picture of it, but the picture does not do it justice. It's made out of fabric, and it is, it is really a work of art. So, and I wrote the, the note to the people who, who donated it, and I asked them if they had any information about the artist. I'd love to be able to, to put something up near there, just describing the, how it was put together, because it's just beautiful, it's absolutely beautiful. The other thing that I want to just let you know is that our new music teacher at Bresnahan is greeting the kids when they get off the bus every day, playing his guitar and singing to them as they enter the building, so.
They love him.
Yes, they do, yes.
Principals do that other places too, they sing.
Superintendent.
Superintendent.
I've been down to, I think it's time for a bet.
Whoever wins gets to sing.
Her mayor sits outside City Hall with her.
Everyone should come to the fall, it's Friday night, you'll get enough of this. It's to raise money for roof overhead, so that's where usual halls should be, where all the elected officials will be doing things way outside their comfort zone.
All the elected officials?
All of them.
Well, you're not, you're supposed to, you've been asked.
It was the first I've, I've heard of it.
Yeah, I have been asked.
Us elected officials have not been asked.
Yes.
I didn't get any, I didn't even know what was happening.
Seriously?
Seriously.
Absolutely.
Because you've been involved every year.
No, I was involved a couple of years, yeah, but, but I never, I didn't get any mail.
Okay.
Nick was gonna do Hamlet's Soliloquy in Spanish.
With a cane.
Staring at a tequila bottle.
All right, excuse me. We're gonna go quick, this is not good for our new school committee member who's in the audience.
Let me continue?
Could you, could you, just explain to me what the word branding means?
Identify.
Sounds like.
No, it's, it's, it's really about, it's sort of, it's no, no different than the, the little icons that we used on the strategic planning brochure to identify each of the, it's just, it's one more way to make a visual link.
It's a, like an emoji.
So we want, we want to get children to, for example, understand, you know, when, when we talk about kindness, what are examples of kindness? And how do you, what does kindness look like? So when you, so we, we're trying to give really concrete examples of that. Mullen held a very successful back-to-school picnic. About seventy-five percent of our fourth grade classrooms and families attended, which was really good, and attendance was lower from the fifth grade. So they are, they are trying to come up with some fun ways to attract more, more of our fifth grade families for next year. Each student received a bag in the Clipper colors with the Mullen school name on it, as well as three of the Clipper values, respect, responsibility, and kindness. These are three that we believe are the most developmentally appropriate and the easiest to, for our students to understand. And Mullen holds individual assemblies for the Clipper values. This year, there will be student-led assemblies by two classrooms. Along with the assemblies, we have challenges for the kids that go along with the value. For example, with kindness, students recognize others being kind to them and write them down to post on our hallway bulletin board. And Mullen has also implemented a new recognition system. Tara purchased little anchor stamps, and students receive a stamp for modeling any of the Clipper values and following the Mullen expectations. And on Fridays, the number of stamps per classroom are collected, and the winner per grade level receives a blue anchor to hang on their door. And at the end of the month, the prize for the most stamps is chosen by the winning class, could be extra recess, no, no homework night, a makerspace activity, so.
Pizza party.
That's what they're, nah, it's not listed here. NOC is doing sort of the same types of activities. Obviously, the, the activities change as your students get older. The high school looks at the Clipper values, certainly it's all throughout the student handbook, but they also are doing that through, having a word retrieval problem today. Not mentee-mentee, help me here with advisor-advisee. I knew that wasn't the right word, through their advisor-advisee program, so.
We wouldn't have noticed.
There's, there's a lot, there's a lot of, there's a lot of positive things that are happening in this area, and we're really trying to, to keep the momentum. And because ultimately, the goal is to, you know, as was talked about, the importance of safety in the schools, for kids to feel safe, and to really help to increase and create a positive culture in every building across the entire district. So that's really the, what we're aiming for. I'm just gonna keep talking.
That's great, I like that, I.
I'm stealing the stamps. I like, we're bringing them to Mullen. Yeah, I'm trying to talk my guidance counselor and some of the girls in the, like a positive culture club. About the stamps, they love it.
And students need to know that, that teachers feel these environmental things and these values are important. And to kind of hallmark one at a time at a meeting is kind of a fabulous focus for kids to understand what that means.
And just so you know, that when I meet with every new staff person, that is one of the conversations that I have with every new staff person, is that it's my expectation as superintendent that not only do I hold staff and students accountable for the Clipper values, but that my expectation is that the adults in the building help to teach them and are good role models for kids as well. So that's a, that's a conversation.
And we hold ourselves responsible for those too.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Mr. Menon had a question or a comment?
No, I just, actually, it's just a late addition to your report. I wonder if you might get a chance to just say a few moments, say a few words about the mindfulness environment meeting that, that we had, the district had.
Oh, sure. We had, we had the entire leadership team along with probably another dozen people from the community. And this was the, the efforts for environmental stewardship. And we pulled everybody together along with the leadership team. And I ended up having to leave because I had had a death in the family, but I'm gonna let Angela just talk about the, the event itself.
Sure, Bruce, feel free to, because Bruce was there too. It was wonderful dialogues. We broke into smaller groups where there was a combination of community members and people from the school district, our, our leadership team from the school district. And our courier facilitated a lot of it and posed some really good questions about being a part of an initiative that was successful. What did that feel like? What elements were involved in having a successful initiative? The teams kind of brainstormed that in a general way first, and then we kind of posed the whole idea of mindfulness of our environment, and what could that look like? And the teams brainstormed those kind of things. Everybody talked about whatever your role was, whatever organization you were representing, or if you were a part of the school, to think about the work that you do and how this might be connected to your work.
Yeah, I think I would, the other thing I wrote to that is that in the, sort of the nuts and bolts section, where, where people were really trying to figure out, what's the next step? What do we actually do? There was a lot of conversation about matching resources that exist in the community with teachers, with students, with classes, with curriculum, just to try to make that happen. Doing surveys of what's out there and what we're doing and try to see where the, where they mesh.
Where the connections are, yeah.
Were students involved?
Not at this level. We had students on video to start us off. A couple of students had been interviewed, and we opened the session with that student video and what they were talking about. But that's our hope as we move forward.
And our next meeting is on the twenty-sixth or twenty-eighth? I don't remember, but it's our next meeting, we are inviting some additional staff, and we hope to have both the high school, at least one high school student and a middle school student present at that meeting. So it's, it's, it's growing legs, it's, I think it's very positive, and it's gonna be just one more way where we can provide some experiential learning for students.
That's great.
And I'm just gonna keep on going, if that's all right?
Leadership team?
So one of the things that I just wanted to bring to your attention is that through the leadership team retreat that we had, and as you know, we've been working together, and there were some new ideas that came forward. So one of the things that typically we meet twice a month. And so what we've decided to do is we're going to be meeting as a large leadership team just once a month, and then we're, we have working groups for the other time that's, that's within the, the, twice a month. So we have created some small committees, so not everybody is on every committee, obviously. But we're looking at, one of the committees is on Alice Training and Safety and rolling that out this year. Looking at curriculum, professional development, communications, and marketing is another committee. The leadership team suggested that we, one of the things they might like to do is to, and I have not talked to Peter Hill about this yet, but to have, instead of Peter and I, just the two of us meeting to maybe broaden that group a little bit and meet on a more regular basis.
That's a great idea.
Looking at PBIS, looking at the actual structure of our leadership meetings, and, and wanting to put together a committee for identifying the professional development that would occur during those. And then two other things that we will get to as the year rolls out would be the creation of a staff handbook and also looking at homework policies across the district. So we have a pretty, it's a pretty ambitious agenda. People are working independently, are working in small groups, and will be communicating out to the larger leadership team. So it's a, it's a new way of, of working, and we're gonna try it. I will keep you posted on it.
Sounds good.
And I think that was everything for me.
Thank you. Assistant superintendents report?
Yes.
If you can talk now?
I think I can now. I don't know what that was, but, pardon me.
I'm fine.
I'm gonna talk a little bit about the Title III grant. We are, Title III grant is a grant for English language acquisition, an academic achievement program for our English learners. And as you know, we're a low, we're considered a low incidence district, so we couldn't apply for this grant on our own, we have to apply through a collaborative. And so we have joined forces with Drakot, Crest Collaborative, Amesbury, and Newburyport to work on this grant. We had a meeting last week, and it was really exciting because there are, the grant would be for almost seventeen thousand dollars. It's not a huge amount of money, but it was enough money for us to build three kind of major components of this grant that I'll tell you about. One piece was, we were allocating enough money that we could stipend a person to hold some community seminars at each of our sites. And we have noticed that a lot of the families of our English learners are needing a lot of support to help them understand the community. So we thought some of those seminar topics would be how to identify medical and dental resources in the community. Another would be how to sign up for extracurricular activities, what the extracurricular activities for the students are, who you have to contact, how you go about getting involved in those. And the third would be understanding more about school cultures here. So, you know, because we're even seeing small things that are very cultural, like when students are taking field trips, some of our families of our English learners are very hesitant to let the children go on the field trip. That's not culturally something they understand. What is that about? Why would you take my child out of the building? I don't feel comfortable with that. So just helping them understand some of the cultural differences that exist in our school communities. So that's one aspect. Another is that we're going to hold a vacation camp for our English learners, grades K to eight during April vacation. And we're gonna have two different sites for that. And one of the objectives we've had in Newburyport for our sheltered English immersion transnational district was that we wanted to start doing some more regional work. I think I talked to the committee about that a couple of times. So we decided that we would hold the site of the camp here in Newburyport, but it would include both Newburyport and Amesbury students. As a step in that direction. And then the other camp would be held in Methuen at Crest. And the good news about this is that Crest, you know, has small buses through their collaborative, and gave us a very good price through this grant so that we can actually provide the transportation for the students, which is one of the things that really holds some of our English language families from being able to participate in some of these things. So we were able to fund through the grant, the transportation for the students. Each camp would take about twenty-five students, and this would be held during April vacation. We can also fund two teachers and an IA at each of the camps through this.
That's great, that's great.
Yeah, it's exciting stuff. And then the last is also really good, which is that we're gonna build an online professional development course for teachers that would meet their fifteen PDP recertification requirement in, in SEI. And our focus is going to be on teaching the newcomer in the classroom, the new. The newcomer are the greatest population among all of the districts that are involved in this, and our newcomers are the students who come to us who speak very little English. So even our teachers who have taken the SEI endorsement class, which is a great class, and they feel like they walk away with a lot of resources to start to address the needs of the students, there's nothing in the SEI endorsement class that teaches you about what you do with a student in your class that speaks very little English, or, or any at all. So that's going to be our focus of that. We will run two sections of that, each section can accommodate 25 students, so 50 teachers in all could participate in that. And every single one of these things that we developed through this grant, we thought these, we can view each of these as sort of pilots, so that we can say, if this is successful, then we can extend these, we can build, we can make these bigger. And then lastly, we had a little bit of money left after doing all of those things, and, so we're going to do, try to do some collaborative translation services.
That sounds really exciting.
It does.
That's great.
Good stuff.
Are there any subcommittees that need reporting?
Policy, Matt, we will be producing some policies for you probably for the next meeting, if required, in the area of substance abuse, opioids specifically, and specifically on verbal screening, that's a requirement now from the state.
Verbal screening?
Verbal screening.
What is that?
Basically, yet another way of reaching out to students early.
Oh, conversation.
Conversation.
Okay.
So that we know.
There are issues.
What's about, it's, it's really exciting, we've got some good stuff on that, and then we have also put together a calendar for the rest of the year.
It's formal, formal letters for me.
About your impending retirement?
Impending.
Thank you.
It's still 10 months away.
Here, you can have this back. I'm kidding. Is there anything else? I just would like to make a couple of announcements that, actually, Mr. DeCantor should be doing this one, however, we'll just make it brief. Tomorrow evening, the NEF dedication for the high school auditorium is in the auditorium, and it begins at 7:00, 6:30, 7:00?
7:00.
And as the mayor mentioned, we have the wonderful Follies that keeps a roof over our head on Friday, and that's at the firehouse.
Double check, I guess. Voting tomorrow?
Voting tomorrow? I'm not, I'm not doing public service announcements, well, maybe I am.
Specific.
Yeah, it's the 26th, it's the 26th.
It's the dedication.
It's not.
It's a week from.
No, it's the 26th.
I'm very sorry, that's, thank you, I would have been there alone, in the dark.
Sorry, oh my god.
26, yeah.
26, that's 7:00.
Yeah.
All right, you did look at me like, what? Anyway, open house Wednesday, September 27th at the Bresnahan, 6 o'clock. Thursday, September 28th, Mullen, 6 o'clock. Thursday, October 5th, Bresnahan, grades pre-KK, 6 o'clock. The others have already occurred, correct? Is there anything further business in front of this August committee mayor?
I just want to remind everybody that starting October, October 2nd, we begin our school committee meetings over at the Senior Community Center, as opposed to this room. We really felt that, you know, this is a hard place to get to for people, especially if events are going on. Takes 20 minutes to get into a school committee meeting as opposed to 30 seconds if you pull up to the Senior Community Center. So we have it booked for October, November, and December, we're going to try to see if that is a better venue for our meetings, and I do have to double check that Joint Ed has space at 5:30, because that's one thing that I just, when we booked for 6:30, but I'm sure that if we're going in at 6:30, we can find the space at 5:30 for Joint Ed's meeting, so, but I will double check that.
That's only once a month anyway, so.
This is potentially our last meeting here.
Potentially could be our last meeting in this room.
Do we get to paint the walls?
No. I was thinking about signing it in the corners.
You know.
Like the doors in the city council chambers are all signed.
Like the door at the old Brown School, all the kids signed the doors. Somebody was going to throw those away. Anything further?
Not quite the garden park floor, but.
Second?
Discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sure, look, that's not bad, I didn't get my dollar. Sean, if I get them out of here by 8 o'clock, they pay me a dollar.
I made the motion.
I made the motion, mayor, second.